Okay, it is seven o'clock on Thursday, October tenth. This is the regular city council meeting for the City of El Burnett, and we will go ahead and call it to order. We'll start with our Pledge of Allegiance, if you please join me.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the night of the United States of America, to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Counselor Trump.
Present.
Counselor Bozenberg.
Present.
Counselor Sukup.
Present.
Counselor Myers.
Present.
Counselor West is absent. But let the record reflect that we do have a quorum to conduct business tonight. I would seek a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Myers, do I have a second? Second by Bozenberg, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion carries. We are on page two of your packet, and we will recognize our Sheriff Deputy.
Um, how's everyone doing? Uh, looks like we met our forty-three hours for the month. Um, just a quick rundown of calls, there's still a few school resource officer calls, so it looks like Kelly's been out and about doing Kelly things, which is good. And then I know recently somebody had made a remark about students speeding out toward, like Lafayette and that way, so I know yesterday I was sitting out just past to the east side of Lafayette, and today there was another deputy in Lafayette trying to, um, give the students a heads up to, it's not a racetrack, and slow down. Usually I try to patrol up C Avenue right around school times, and I've seen speeds dramatically drop as soon as they see me, so. Just trying to be a present. Um, other than that, any, do I have questions or comments? Misses Swift.
We always appreciate you being in the area, for sure.
And is, when's homecoming? Where did I miss that?
It was last week.
Okay, because I, we have like three going on at the same time, so I was just, I know we had like Center Point and all that stuff two weeks before that, so, okay.
Nope, we were all covered, so.
All right, hope you guys need anything, please reach out, all right?
Awesome, thank you.
Have a good night, thank you.
Bye.
That brings us to citizen comments. Uh, here in the City of El Burnett, we have two types of comments, those for agenda-related items and non-agenda-related items. Um, I don't think anyone in here is on the agenda, so we will start with any citizen, we do ask that you state your name and address clearly for the record, and limit comments to five minutes. Any comments on agenda-related items?
Jason Smith, twenty-nine fifteen Ragin Road. This, uh, just happened spur of the moment today. I don't know when it's appropriate to talk about this, but, uh...
We'll give you non-agenda, it's gonna be in about thirty seconds.
Okay.
So, this is only if it's something for the agenda.
Gotcha.
I'm hearing none. Now we'll move to non-agenda-related items, and you're up.
Uh, this is in regards to, uh, three thirteen Roosevelt Street. There's a property for sale. Uh, I put an offer in it the other day. Uh, they countered my offer. I want to accept that offer. Contingent on me being able to build a new garage there. I've talked to Lynn County Planning and Zoning. Uh, this is your jurisdiction. I understand they just take over permitting and inspections.
Correct.
Talked to the gal in the office here the other day. Uh, as long as the peak's not more than thirty-five feet in the air, and, uh, not to be over forty percent of the total square footage of the lot.
Correct.
So I'd like to accept that counter offer tonight, but I don't know where y'all stand.
Yeah, so that's, um...
I'd hate to accept the, the offer and not be able to do anything with that property.
Yep, so the way that the process works is, um, you would submit through Lynn County, and like you said, they're responsible for the building portion, the electrical, the plumbing, all that stuff. They'll send us the, um, the zoning request, and that's what we're responsible for. It's all through the same process for them, so you'll just start with them, and they'll send it us.
Right.
So when I look at the zoning, I'm looking at setbacks to make sure that the setbacks are, uh, appropriate, and then, uh, yeah, that, that you're not covering forty percent of the lot, and that...
Does that include the house?
That is just for an accessory building, let me pull it up, so...
I'm not on terribly good terms with Lynn County, so at one time I had talked about anything into, uh, city limits, when...
When we can.
Well, when Guy was here.
Oh, sure.
So...
Well, and it's funny you mention that, we're in the process of hiring a city administrator, and one thing I want them to look at is our comprehensive plan, which would include what our land management looks like. So, that'll be a, a good time, we can maybe come back and readdress that. I might have been in here when you called the other day, because I still, I still have the zoning ordinance up.
Sure.
So for...
I can't remember the gal that I talked to.
Vicki, she's our clerk, yeah. For a detached accessory building, so this would be, I assume this won't be attached to the house.
No.
Right, so it cannot be located in the front yard. Cannot be closer than three feet to any lot line. Shall not occupy more than forty percent of the required rear yard, so that's...
Forty percent of?
The required rear yard.
So what do you consider the rear yard? Immediately to the back of the existing house?
Of the principal building, yep. Yep, which I know that one's got, um, substantial, and then... No portion can be closer than three feet to the principal building, so three feet to the house, but I have a feeling you're gonna be further back than three feet from the house. And then the height of the accessory building shall not exceed the maximum height for the permitted use. In this case, it's residential, and that's thirty-five feet.
Okay.
So let me look at what the rear yard requirement is for residential. I scroll up a couple of pages, and this is on our website, so if you go to our ordinances, it's the zoning ordinance.
Like I said, this just happened in the last day and a half. I looked at that house initially, and, uh, someone beat me to it, so...
Sure.
But now it's up for sale, I haven't renovated it.
So the required rear yard is twenty-five feet. This is deeper...
Off the rear property was...
So what you're required, you're required to have twenty-five feet of rear yard. So you couldn't cover more than forty percent of that required twenty-five feet. But I know this one's a much deeper lot.
Yes.
You've got, you've got room to work, yes.
I want to build a new garage, but as everyone well knows, I run the concrete business, which I have additional warehousing off-site. But my boy would move in to that house. Um, I'd hate to rent it out right now, but I want to build a new garage, but you might be shocked at the size I want to pursue. So, it wouldn't be a pole building, uh...
We have no regulations against that, I mean, so I can't, I can't stop you if it is.
Yeah.
Um, I will say, so for the size, also check with Lynn County, because I do know, the, the bigger you get, then you do get requirements like sprinkler systems and some other things, and so I don't, I don't know the dimensions on that and can't speak to it.
Sure.
But what our zoning ordinance, the part that we're gonna sign off on, is that it can't be taller than thirty-five feet, and it can't cover more than forty percent of that required twenty-five feet.
Can't occupy more than forty percent of rear of the house to your setbacks, whether your rear setback, I don't know if that's different than your three-foot side lot setbacks.
The setbacks...
I'm not gonna try to irritate the neighbors or anything, so...
Yeah, so it's twenty-five feet for a front yard, twenty-five feet for a rear yard, and then the side yards have to be seven feet.
Okay.
But again, if those don't, if, if those don't exist on the prin, that's for the principal building, that's for the house.
Okay.
And that's grandfathered in because that lot's been, and again, I know it's more than seven feet off the side lot. So, the accessory building is just the can't cover more than forty percent and can't be taller than thirty-five feet.
Forty percent of the rear of the yard?
Correct, the required rear yard, and then it has to be three feet off the property line.
Does that include the rear property line?
What's that, is what?
Uh, setback.
Yeah, you have to be three feet off of that.
Both side lots and rear property. I know different townships or C-RFs, you know, they got a little bit different zoning, so...
I think this one said three feet off of any property line.
There's no easements.
Not to my knowledge, um, Matt can check on that for you tomorrow. Setback from an adjacent street, that doesn't count. Yeah, not closer than three feet to another lot line. However, a roof canopy of an accessory building may project into a required side yard a point one-third of the distance to the lot line from an exterior wall.
And this is on your city website?
Yes, yep, yeah, it's... Uh, the pages are hard, because the page number on the document doesn't match. It's chapter one sixty-five, which is our zoning regulation. So you'll want to look at, um, one sixty-five dot twenty-three has the stuff about the accessory building, and then one sixty-five... Dot fourteen is the residential. Because that's where it talks about the required...
Okay.
Rear yard and the, the height, references back to the residential piece, so...
But Lynn County has no jurisdiction within city limits?
For the zoning portion, correct. We will sign off, they'll send us something to sign off on.
Okay.
Yep, so basically, we sign off and say, now, if you need anything aside from that, it can go to the Board of Adjustments.
Okay.
So if, for whatever reason you needed to be, let hypothetically, if you needed to be two feet from the lot line, Board of Adjustments would hear about it.
I'm trying to save myself some money, because I'll decline that counter offer tonight if I know I can't do anything.
Yeah.
So, but, uh...
Yeah, I can't speak to the, the size you want to build, as far as how the county would handle that, but the zoning, those are, that's what I'm gonna look at when they send me your site plan.
So it's within your speculation that this could move forward?
Yes, yeah, they have, they have no jurisdiction over the zoning, just the building codes.
Okay, which is good to hear, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have to stay for the whole meeting?
Not even a little bit.
She'll be right in there. You can cut out if you want.
That's why we put citizen comments at the top. Um, if you do have other questions, reach out. Um, my email and phone number are both on the website, too, so...
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, appreciate you coming in. Any other non-agenda-related items? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the mayor's report. I have just a couple of things. Um, it's not on the agenda, because there's no action yet from council, so I, I'm gonna try and make it a habit of letting you all know what I'm gonna be putting out, requests for quotes. So this is, we do have the process where after the meeting, when we publish the minutes, we put the things that we're putting out for quote at the bottom of the minutes, and then we also post it around town. Historically, I've done that, and then brought you the quotes, and so now I'm gonna try and get better about making you aware of kind of what we have going. So what I have started so far, there may be some more as a result of tonight's agenda, but we are going to go out for quote for snow removal, um, to have supplementary help there. We had that in place last year, and it was nice to be able to call on somebody, um, at just an, excuse me, an hourly rate as needed, to come in and, and help supplement city staff. We will be putting out, oh, this is on the agenda, but we will be putting out for a park engineer, I hope, so we'll get to that later on the agenda. And then, um, one thing we're gonna look at is fire department services, whether they need, if we have any regular inspections or things, that it would be helpful to have someone kind of on contract for that, a great example, and it has come up recently, are there, uh, fire extinguisher inspections, so... Uh, we also received, I did not have this on my list, um, the, James Swoboda finished the last of the work on the one thirty-four and one thirty-five for the fire department. He did find a few things that he's given us quotes. I'm, I'm gonna run that by Chief Hoover, and see if that's work that he feels we need to have done, and then we'll send those out for quote as well. We did already receive James's, but we'll open that up for anyone else that wants to provide a quote for that. So those are, those will be going out after this meeting. Uh, I do want to extend, I'm gonna look directly at you, but I mean this for you and all of your brothers and sisters that stand beside you. I want to thank our fire department. This is a very busy time of year for them, um, with parades and, uh, football standby, and now it's Fire Prevention Week, and then I know you've got some trainings, a lot of your bi-weekly training plus additional training that you guys have done, both with the grain bin. I know they've got a training burn coming, so this is, uh, I just really appreciate our volunteers that put in as much time as they do. And especially, Vern, I'm gonna look at you, but I know this goes to a few other of your, uh, team members as well, the ones that reach out and bring in outside resources, uh, to really augment what we do. I happened to be at their Monday meeting, and they had someone from, um, a regional, like a maternity services, that was talking about, um, what it looks like to deliver a baby, and they had a hands-on simulation, and it was fascinating.
It was fun.
It was fun, uh, to see the, see the young guys get in there and deliver a baby was, uh...
They were mostly like this.
A few of them tried it, but...
Want anything to do with it.
But that's gonna stick with...
We told them put on a catcher's mitt, that's all you gotta do.
But that's gonna stick, so I appreciate all the time you guys put into, um, this department, because it does not go unnoticed. Last for me is generator update. Uh, we did get the contract back from our attorney. It has been signed by both parties, so we should be kicking off that project in the very near term. I did leave it to Hawkeye, um, kind of their preference. I think next we'll be, probably schedule a kickoff meeting, just so both sides are on the same page, we can get that rolling, so that'll be good. I still hold my breath every time a storm comes through, so I will look forward to having both of those facilities generated. All right, and with that, that is my mayor's report. Moving on to council, I will start to my left with Counsel Myers.
Nothing at this time.
Counsel Sukup.
No.
Counsel Bozenberg.
Present.
Counsel Trump.
Present.
All right. On to written reports, this is page three of your packet, and we'll recognize the fire department, Ms. Verda.
I think you probably got Ron's report there, I'm sure, right?
We do, yeah.
And you were correct, we have a lot going on. Um, have a standby tomorrow night for the football game, and I'm on that, of course. Um, today was a lot of fun, we had a PR session with the El Burnett School. We had pre-K there, we had kindergarten, first grade and second grade. There was a hundred and forty-three students that we worked with today. It was a blast, kids are very energetic, I can tell you that. Um, and, um, I think the most fascinating thing for the kids today was we let them play with the hose and shoot out the fire, so to speak, and, um, they were very thrilled to get to do that. We let all of the kids try on a coat, uh, they found out how heavy it is, it's not light. They got to see Nash Hamilton dress, total and complete, like he was headed for a fire, which they all decided that he looked like Darth Vader. So it, it was a good day, um, all in all, and it's, uh, Fire Prevention Week, and it was about smoke detectors, specifically is what we were after. So it's things like that, um. I'm working on the cadet program, and I will have something probably in the next couple of weeks ready to present, and have to take a look at, and get some feedback from my cohorts at the station. And, um, from there, you were at the meeting the other night, and I think you answered some of the questions with the service contracts, so I won't have to ask about anything about that. And, um, I was gonna say with the cadet program, what I do have is information from Monroe Township Fire Department. I got, um, further information coming in from District Three, which is out of Central City, and I have information from the National Volunteer Fire Council for Junior Firefighter Program. So I've got lots of info coming in, so that I have an idea of what I can put together. That's all we got, and I think everybody saw that Ron wants to retire again.
I appreciate him giving the department notice, hopefully that gives folks time to put some thought into who's looking to step in, and we appreciate the extra time that he gave us, he's a, he's an asset, so...
It's not me.
It's okay, you're good at what you do. I like, I like you right where you are, Vern.
It won't be me.
Any questions for Verda? Thank you very much, ma'am. Next, we'll recognize public works.
Um, things are starting to calm down on my end, which is good. Um, we're getting closer to well three being up and running. We got a few more tests waiting to come back as far as results, but I think we're gonna be able to start running that November first, give it a test run. Same with well two, hopefully get that approved tonight, and get that repaired and back in service. Um, the DNR drinking water inspection went good, they didn't find anything too out of the ordinary, just a few minor recommendations. Yeah, we got the lead service submitted, that was a big, long-term project coming, so glad to have that initially submitted anyway. I'm sure there'll be something we have to do on, after they gather all the data, but... A few more projects here, coming in a few weeks, hopefully get the fire hydrant replaced, and the lagoon valves fixed, and then probably start getting equipment.
Start grabbing for snow.
Gather for winter, and stuff lined around for that.
How we doing for salt and sand?
I'm gonna have to go get a big truck loads. We got some left over, but I want to get it full before season starts, and get, before we put the solder on the dump truck.
Have you been able to identify where most of the shut offs are for the services? I, I think you've been working on that, haven't you?
Um, I was earlier this spring with everything going on, I kinda, as I find, as I run into one, I, that's buried, I try to put an extension on it and fix it, and, but no, I haven't dedicated a lot of time to it. Yeah, but yeah, I mean, there's, there's quite a few of them that are buried and unknown.
Some of them I think are, because we've tried the wand to find them, and it's gonna turn into cooperation from the homeowner, we may have to even like electrify the line, so that we can get a good trace on it.
Some of them are just too deep, and they just, they don't ping with our metal detector.
Where's your under cement?
Oh, yeah, I tried to find one the other day, but it got, I don't know, it could be under the dr, gravel driveway, how far, we have, just, some of them older homes especially, just don't have a good idea where they're at.
We did have one, there was a home for sale in town, and so the current homeowners asked to have the water shut off, uh, while they worked to sell it, and then we no sooner turned it off, and they're like, oh, wait, our, our realtor needs it on so that they can do the inspection, and it wouldn't turn back on, and so they had to replace it, have they, or they're at least going to. That's, that's the homeowner's responsibility, if they had to replace their curb stop.
Yeah, they got, a handy came and fixed it for them. It was just, just the box itself was bent, when I found it, it didn't have a cap on it, and it was buried full of mud. I literally get it, yeah, shut off, but it was bent enough that it wouldn't turn back on. But the valve was working everything for them, so that was, it saved them a lot of money that way.
That's good, I hadn't heard how that resolved. Any other questions for Mac? He's got a couple of agenda items, too, so we'll come back to one of those. I'm glad you're getting a little breathing room, because it was pretty bad there for a while.
Yeah.
All right, next is city clerk treasury, so you have the clerk's report. Um, I do know she's been doing a ton of training, both some conferences as well as some virtual trainings, so you may occasionally come by and see her here, but have city hall closed, that's so she can focus on those online sessions. I think it's super awesome, I think the league offers most of those. Otherwise, we haven't had too much crazy happening on the treasurer's side, or on the clerk's side. So you have our treasurer's report, this will show you balances in each of our funds. So general fund all the way down to water, especially as we start looking at, um, one of the resolutions tonight, you'll notice our water operating fund is at two hundred and thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, so it's just kind of a breakdown to see where we got money ready to be spent. And then the profit and loss is this year's budget. Um, Vern, I'm not sure if Vicki did, I was working with her, we're working to get a report saved to send to Ron, uh, when he submits his report, so I believe she sent that over for this month, but we'll just make that a habit, that when we get his report, we'll follow it up with, uh, budget update, so... And like I said, right now it's not great, but we'll get that fixed. Any questions on clerk treasury? Hearing none, we're down to page nine-ish, and this will be the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Sukup. Do I have a second?
Present.
Second by Trump, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion carries. Um, oh, before we go too far, it is on the claims list, which you missed approved, but we did get the bill for the well three repairs, so that came in at thirty-four thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars. Not terrible, considering it was in a river. And now that well's good to go for a while, so... Okay, on to new business, so eleven A, Resolution twenty-two-four dash thirty-four, accepting and awarding the contract for the FY twenty-four annual examination, so, um... Because we've had a budget over a million dollars for two years in a row, we are required to have an annual exam. Uh, we do pay into the state, uh, to be on their list. I think that's a five-year rotation, um, and we did try to defer this to, to them, and they basically told us that they're, they're already full up, so we have to do an independent. So you've got, I'll read the resolution once we kind of get to that point. But we did send this out for proposal, it's not a bid, because the price tag isn't high enough, but we did send it out for proposal. I think we sent it to five or six local CPA firms, and we got two responses. Responses were due back by the eighth, so Tuesday of this week. So what you'll see is we got one from Rochelle Thompson CPA for five thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars, and Atlas CPA and Advisors for seventeen thousand eight hundred and twenty. I can get you the, um, proposal document that we sent out, if it would be helpful. It is standard from the state, they had a template that you can download, and so we just sent out what the state recommended. I actually probably should have put this under old business, since we've already talked about it, but... Any questions on the annual exam? All right, hearing no questions, I'm gonna go ahead and read, oh, uh, I do want to throw out there that, that Rochelle Thompson also quoted and was awarded for Walker, and so we do, we do know that she's been in the area as well. All right, Resolution twenty-two-four dash thirty-four is a resolution accepting and awarding the contract for the FY twenty-four annual examination. Whereas the City of El Burnett, Iowa is required under section eleven dot six of the Code of Iowa to undergo an annual exam, and whereas the City of El Burnett issued a request for proposal to perform agreed-upon procedures to satisfy the annual examination requirements for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, whereas the City of El Burnett received proposals in response to the RFP by the deadline of October eighth, twenty twenty-four, and whereas there has been filed with the city in response to the RFP certain proposals for the completion of the FY twenty-four annual examination. Again, Rochelle Thompson CPA for five thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars, Atlas CPAs and Advisors for seventeen thousand eight hundred and twenty. And whereas the city councils reviewed the proposals and finds it appropriate to award the contract the lowest responsible quote, now therefore be resolved that the city council of the City of El Burnett, Iowa does hereby award the FY twenty-four annual examination contract to Rochelle K. Thompson CPA in the amount of five thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars. Be it further resolved that the mayor and city clerk are authorized to execute the necessary documents on behalf of the city to formalize the contract for services. I would seek a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-four dash thirty-four.
So moved.
Moved by Myers, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Bozenberg, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion carries. All right, next, we are going to be on page, many pages down. They were very thorough in their proposals. Um, packet got a little out of order, so you're gonna jump to page forty-three for the next resolution, and then we'll go back up for the one after this. So, Resolution twenty-two-four dash thirty-five is approving the AEGIS deductible buyback policy. So this was, um, presented to council informally at the last meeting, uh, from Chris Mattis from Neighbor Insurance. As a reminder, our property insurance recently changed where the deductibles are now one percent of the, um, assessed value. And so a lot of municipalities, school districts, things like that, are employing a deductible buyback policy to bring that amount down. On page forty-four is the quote that was provided to us last meeting. So you'll notice that our total insured value is thirty-seven thousand four hundred dollars. I'll round up a little bit. So this policy, the premium, the annual premium would be twenty four, two thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars. And would bring our deductible down to five thousand. So if we had a complete catastrophic event that wiped out all of our facilities. We would be out of pocket about seventy-five hundred dollars rather than thirty-seven thousand. That is if everything gets wiped out. Now you'll notice that our highest value is the fire station and all of its contents. So deductible, the one percent deductible on the fire station is thirteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars. So similarly, if something just took out the fire station, we would still be seventy-five hundred out of pocket to cover a thirteen thousand dollar deductible. My concern is. I mean, how many years do we pay the premium before we're, we're actually backwards? You know, and if something catastrophic were to happen to the point where all, we'd have to do our total value. I would assume there would be other assistance, uh, such as FEMA money or something else made available that would hopefully help us cover that, but. Pleasure the council, I do have a resolution. If anyone wanted to, I can, can read it. Is there any questions before I will read resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty-five?
Are these, are these replacement costs on these buildings now? Does it get a straight up value?
I think it's replacement. So the replacement on the fire station would be one point four million dollars. So then one percent of that is what it would be. Uh, she did mention this was wind and hail only. So I don't know if that means it doesn't cover fire or, I definitely know it didn't cover vandalism and those types of things.
I don't.
What if it was a tornado?
That would be wind.
Even, even at that, I don't, I don't see the value in this to have. How many years of premiums would it take for us to recoup that money? You know, it's just. I can see where maybe it serves a purpose for other entities, but the value of our properties. You know, and, and the odds of all of them being damaged at the same time. For us to really get the biggest bang out of it. Kind of seems like, and I think you're right. If it's that big of an event, we're going to get some sort of assistance.
Yeah, I wanna think the school, they, they did do a deductible buyback, but I wanna think their deductible was like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or so, like. Cash you don't just keep on hand, uh, for that type of thing. So to buy that down to five thousand makes sense, but. Got resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty-five, I'm gonna read it. Resolution approving the Associated Electric and Gas Insurance Services, AEGIS, with Lloyd's America deductible buyback policy. Whereas the city of Albertan Iowa currently maintains an insurance policy with a one percent deductible on its property insurance with a total insured value of. Three million seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars. And whereas the city council has determined that it would be in the best interest of the city to reduce its deductible liability in the event of a claim. Whereas the Associated Electric and Gas Insurance Services in collaboration with Lloyd's America has provided a quote for deductible buyback policy that would reduce the city's deductible to five thousand dollars. Whereas the annual premium for this deductible buyback policy is quoted at two thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty cents. Now therefore be resolved that the city council of the city of Albertan Iowa does hereby approve the quote. From Associated Electric and Gas Insurance Services for a deductible buyback policy that reduces the city's deductible to five thousand dollars. At an annual premium of two thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty cents. Be it further resolved that the mayor and city clerk are authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to secure this policy on behalf of the city. Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty-five? Alright, hearing none. No action will be taken. Thank you all. We will move on to eleven C. You will have to scroll back up to page forty for this one. Please and thank you. So this is resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty-six, approving the request for qualifications for engineering services for the city park project. So this is. We started the design work for the city park. We need to refine that, get it across the finish line and then the engineer, the focus would be to. Facilitate the remainder of the bidding process, because it is gonna be above the threshold, so it will have to be sealed bid. There's a whole bunch of legalities that go along with that, that these engineers do day in and day out and help keep us out of trouble and then. Project management on the project. I have said over and over, so it's no secret. I would still like the city administrator closely involved in this project, but having the engineer onboard as, um, someone to assist will be very helpful. So all I'm asking for, we will put out for a request for qualifications, since we don't really have a city engineer. Necessarily on contract or retainer, uh, we're just soliciting. Qualifications for these engineering services for the park. One thing I did fail to include in the response requirements, which would probably be important, would be a, um, cost estimate. So I would like to add that in. So that is on page forty-two, the submittal requirements. Right now it's a cover letter expressing interest. Description of their qualifications, key personnel who'd be working on it, project approach, including timeline. References for similar projects and evidence of liability insurance. I would add, um, their estimated cost for services. Is there anything else that I missed? I hope to have this, I have it dated on here so that we have it back in time for. Our November council meeting, which is on the fourteenth, so these are, responses are due by November twelfth. And then we can invite, depending on how many responses we get, we could invite them in for the council meeting if there are any questions. Any questions on this? Hearing none, I will read resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty-six. Resolution approving the request for qualifications for engineering services for the city park. Whereas the city of Albertan Iowa is committed to enhancing public spaces for the benefit of its residents and visitors through the development of a city park. And whereas the city park project has already begun with a preliminary design, but requires professional engineering services to complete the design, provide construction management and ensure the successful execution of the project. Whereas the city has prepared a request for qualifications for engineering firms to submit their qualifications to provide such services. Attached here to as exhibit A. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Albertan Iowa as follows. The RFQ for engineering services for the city park project attached as exhibit A is hereby approved. City staff are authorized to issue the RFQ and take any necessary actions to facilitate the selection of an engineering firm for the project. I would seek a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty-six with the addition of. Cost estimate to the submittal requirements within exhibit A.
May I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Do they understand the scope of the project we're working with?
Yes.
Where's that at?
So that's on top of page forty-one. So they'll review and refine the existing design in collaboration with the city. Provide final engineering design and construction documents, including cost estimates. Recommended value engineering solutions if necessary, facilitate the bidding process to ensure compliance with local, state and federal regulations. Assist in obtaining permits and provide construction oversight and management to ensure the project is completed as designed on time and within budget. Good question. Sorry, I skimmed that part. So we do have cost estimate in their scope of work, but that would be the cost of the project. I would like to add cost to the submittal requirements for, for their services.
I will read up resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty-six and thirty-six and include in, which paragraph we talking about?
It is the submittal requirements.
Add the cost, estimated cost for their services as number seven.
I have a motion by Trum. Do I have a second? Second by Bozenberg. Any further discussion? Uh, the good news is by getting this out in November or having, hopefully bringing them onboard in November. Should be a quick turnaround on the design and then hopefully we can go out to bid this winter and get started in the spring. So I still feel pretty good about the timing. No other questions? Uh, all those in favor say aye. Opposed nay. That motion carries. Eleven D. Find this on page forty-six. Resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty-seven amendment to resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty. For the maintenance on well number two to include iron related bacteria treatment. It's pretty self-explanatory. Uh, Mac did a great job, uh, including it in his report and then you do also have the, um, updated quote from. Northway Well and Pump Company. That includes the bacteria treatment. So that's pages forty-seven and forty-eight. One thing I did, um, I went back to their original quote, because their original quote was, was itemized out. And I just made sure all the things were covered. Because they also, the original quote they gave us was worst case scenario. So there's a couple of things. On here that are not on here around certain pieces of pipe or those types of things. There's one for, uh, stainless steel head shaft. I assume they don't need it, uh, which is why they didn't put it on the revised quote. However, I did find one item on the original that's not on the revised that feels like it should be, and that is to chlorinate the well. And the pumping equipment and then do testing. They may have included it elsewhere, but just to cover us so we don't have to come back. I also included that in the resolution. So it is the new quote plus the eighteen hundred dollars for that chlorinating line item. Just in case it gives maximum wiggle room, um, in case this moves a little bit, but. So just to be clear, this is not sixty-three thousand dollars in addition to the forty-two we already approved. This is sixty-three thousand dollars. Ish, plu- plus change in total. So I'll read through the details, but I just wanted to be clear on that. Cause when he first said it, I thought it was in addition to and I. This got really expensive, but this is an all-inclusive quote, so. Any questions before I dive into the resolution? Alright, hearing none. I will go ahead and read resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty-seven, which is the amendment to resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty, approving the contractor for maintenance on well number two. To include iron related bacteria treatment and increase total cost. Whereas the city of Albertan Iowa previously passed resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty, awarding a maintenance contract for well number two to Northway Well and Pump Company in the. Amount not to exceed forty-two thousand six hundred eighty, eighty-nine dollars and twenty cents. And whereas it has been determined that additional treatment for iron related bacteria is necessary to ensure the proper functioning and longevity of well number two. Whereas the inclusion of this additional treatment has resulted in an increase to the total cost of the maintenance. Bringing the total amount not to exceed sixty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and two cents plus freight. Whereas the updated total cost reflects the amount from Northway well, Northway Wells quote received October seventh. Plus the cost to chlorinate and test the well and pumping equipment that was part of the original quote approved by the city council on August eighth, twenty twenty four. Now therefore be resolved that the city council of the city of Albertan Iowa does hereby amend resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty. To include the iron related bacteria treatment for well number two and increase the total amount awarded to a Northway Well and Pump Company. To an amount not to exceed sixty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and two cents plus freight. Subject to subsequent receipt of permission and direction to proceed by Albertan Public Works staff. Any questions? We don't know what freight's gonna cost, so we just left it on there. Do you wanna speak to the video? I mean, you could definitely see stuff collected.
Yeah, it was definitely very hairy. I mean, yeah.
There's these big lodges in there and there's stuff just piled up on it.
Like the bedrock, like the caverns of the bedrock, it was settled and all the like crevices and stuff, yeah, it definitely.
I want to make a motion when we accept resolution twenty twenty four thirty-seven. Amendment to resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty, approving contractor for maintenance on well two. To include iron related bacteria treatment and increased total cost.
Motion by Bozenberg. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Suker. Any further discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carries. Alright, moves us to old business. We are gonna be on page forty-nine. Discussion of possible action regarding water drainage issue on Longwood Avenue. So Mac did have Roto Ruder come out. You have that, that, uh, report in your packet along with a couple of pictures of what they found. Mac, I guess I'll let you speak a little bit to kind of what's going on in this particular area.
So we tested it from the storm drain. There's a two tiles that go in and head north towards the. The area that's of concern. There's a twelve inch tile. That was cleared the whole way until it comes above ground. It's like a hundred and nine feet, I think it was. And then there's a four inch tile as well and they only made that thirteen feet and it was. Clogged up and couldn't get a camera through it any farther. So it didn't even make it to the sidewalk. And talking with Roto Ruder and they think a four inch tile is not adequate drainage anyway for that kind of, that big of an area, so.
So we didn't pursue poking a hole anywhere else and have them continue. And we also assume, knowing what we know about. Whatever tile had been an issue in that area, odds are it's the four inch that was cut. We know we're gonna hit gravel, we know we're gonna hit betonite, we know we're gonna hit. So we just, again, with, it's not gonna be sufficient anyway, so we abandoned searching any further. On the pictures, what you'll see, the first picture shows the manhole and then there's a green flag. That is how far they made it before they hit. An obstruction, so didn't even make it to the sidewalk. The second picture, the twelve inch tile, daylights at about that privacy fence. So it's. Like one lot deep into that street, so. I have a feeling it was intended to go further and it, I, I don't, it's weird that it would just daylight. So page fifty-one has the pictures of that twelve inch tile, so you can see it's, it is clear and it comes up and you find blades of grass. So what I intend to ask council is for approval to, um, put this out for quote. To see what it would take to get it fixed. I'm not saying we have to do the work. I think we still have to determine what our responsibility is here. Maybe the presence of that twelve inch tile is enough, but I would at least like to pursue quotes to see what it would take. Does it have to be tiled? Could it be regraded? Like I, I don't even know what's possible solutions are, so I would like to explore that.
So we don't know if this tile goes all the way up or not?
The twelve inch one only goes to this privacy fence.
First lot.
It goes one lot. It's a hundred and nine feet. That's it. But then it comes out of the ground. So that one's clear, but it only goes one lot in and there's what, five lots on that?
That means there's no more.
Physically look at that area, does it, how well does it drain that way? Or is it, you know, or is it, as you go from south to north, does it. Undulate going uphill and downhill, making ponds and everything or?
The 12-inch tile seems like it's too high. I think the water would, I think water would pool where it, when headed north, where it comes out of the ground, I think water would pool in front of it. It seems like it, the tile's too high to.
That's the drain.
And the ground is severely, I mean, there's gullies back there from where it's just been running across the ground year, for years, so there's kinda like trenches, war back there too.
Just a mess.
Yeah.
And to answer your question, as each homeowner graded their yard, yeah, they, they all kinda did their own, they didn't maintain any kind of swell or anything that would promote drainage.
And what'd you say the easements there, like 10 feet?
And there are fences, so this, it just, it could get tricky. And most of the fences are on the property lines.
Yeah, you have to, first thing you see what you can do, then you have to get home, advise, and see what they'll do.
Yep, yeah, I think our best bet is just to see what options we have. Again, we were always operating under the fact that, that the tile that was there maybe just needed to be replaced, but if it's four inches, it's not gonna, that's not gonna solve anything either, so we're, we're kinda back to the drawing board on what needs to even be done. So, um, I don't know if y'all have to make a motion to approve that, because again, I don't have you approve going out for quote for other things, but just knowing this one had already come to council, and they had decided to back off, I would, I would entertain a motion to approve pursuing quotes regarding the drainage issue on Longworth Avenue.
I'll make a motion to seek quotes on resolving the draining issue, drainage issue.
On Longworth?
Yes.
That, all right, motion by Myers, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trump, any further discussion?
Do you want to do those things?
Uh, it, probably wouldn't have to, since we're not expanding anything, but doesn't hurt just for consistency sake. And I have a quorum, so we're good. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay?
Opposed nay.
And councillor Suker abstains. Motion carries. All right, last under old business is hiring update. So we posted for the city administrator position using the updated job description. Um, we received several resumes, excited about some of the candidates, we've had three interviews that have all gone really well. The hiring committee is actually, the, the last of the three was this morning, we didn't really have a chance to debrief from that, so we're gonna meet immediately after this meeting and go over that, and then do a final resume review to see if there are any other interviews that we would like to schedule. But, I would say it's, the three we have talked to, I'm, I'm very excited about their applications, and so, I imagine we will be coming with a recommendation, potentially a special meeting next week to get this finalized, so we'll provide more information on that. Anything else for my hiring committee? Any questions about the process? Okay. That's what I've got on the hiring update. Any final comments? I'll start with councillor Trump, so councillor Bozenberg?
Yeah, I got something, uh, Dave Mahesek sent a letter to me, going up here to the city, and, and I got it, I got back from fishing trip. And anyways, it was a resolution in 1954 for the, uh, the.
Vacating the alleyways?
Vacating the alleyways. His wife founded in the historical society when she was going through some paperwork, but it never got filed. They did it, but they never filed. So, I've got the, I've got it, hold, I was gonna bring it, I forgot all about it, but just to, you know, when they were saying, well, it's been deeded over, and had been talked about, but they didn't file it for some reason. It's all signed and everything, and.
The fact that she could even find that.
Yeah, she was just going through some books, and it was like, what's this paper? She opened it up, and it was a resolution. So, anyway, I'll bring it up to the city so you can get it, it's kinda.
That's cool.
They weren't wrong.
They weren't wrong. I, I don't imagine they'd honored a 60-year-old resolution, so we probably would've had to redo it anyway, but.
So, anyway, that's all I had.
That is cool. And it's interesting what they can find over there. Well frankly, what we found out in the, in the extra base here, we find some old ballots from.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Found some old ballots, and a voting thing, and.
That's when there used to be a register, they'd write everybody's vote down, it, it's pretty cool stuff.
Hey, that's, that was the old one.
Awesome, thank you for that update.
Okay.
Councillor Suker, anything?
Nothing.
Councillor Myers?
Um, not city-related, but you might be able to see the northern lights tonight.
Interesting, if I could stay awake that long.
It's 18 too.
No, that, it should be going on right now.
Oh, nice. Usually it's, usually it's too late at night.
It's November, it's almost November, and it's just getting dark, so early these days.
It's dark early.
It's gonna get worse in a couple.
Couple weeks, yeah.
First of November, I think it's November.
Yep. All right, Mac, anything down?
Nope.
Verna? Okay, me neither. That, our, confirm our date and time for our next meeting is Thursday, November 14th at 7:00 PM. Again, that's our regular meeting, I do expect a special, uh, be there next week or the week after, so I'll be sending an email on that. All right, I seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Bozenberg, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Myers, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you all, uh, 7:56 PM.